Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Growth Infrastructure Waste Committee, which is the first for this year. It's the first of February 2024. And I apologise that we are starting, I think, seven minutes late. It's nine oh seven. We had a few technical difficulties, and we just thought we'd wait a little bit. It's more important, we thought, to capture the record rather than just proceeding without it being recorded. I call council attendance. I see everyone in here except for councillor Tully. So I'd like to move councillor Tully's has a request to attend via audio link. So I move that in accordance with section two, five, four K of the Local Government Regulations 2012 and eight point six point two of council's meeting procedures policy, that council for Tully be permitted to participate in the meeting via audio link. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, deputy mayor. I put that to the vote. Those in favour? Councillor Doyle? It's unanimous in the room. Welcome councillor Tully. Can I just check that you can hear us and we can hear you?
Loud and clear. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, councillor Tully. There are no apologies. So I'll move on to the acknowledgement of country. If a city council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land and waters we share, we pay our respects to the elders past, present and emerging as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and stories of our proud people. We'll now move on. Are there any declarations of interested matters on the agenda? Thank you. Now move on to matters of recommendation to council. There are no matters that are outstanding. So item one is the confirmation of the minutes of the Growth Infrastructure and Waste Committee on the 28th of November 2023. I will move that. Do I have a second? Thank you, councillor Doyle. Are there any corrections, omissions, amendments anyone would like to propose? There are none. I'll move the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous in the chamber. How do you vote, councillor Tully?
I agree.
Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. We move on to our first officer's report. And in particular, this is a matter which will be resolved, maybe resolved under delegation. So the decision here is the decision that this council makes. It doesn't go to the ordinary council meeting under the delegations for the Growth Infrastructure Waste Committee. And it's item two, which is the development application four, six, five, zero slash twenty twenty three slash MCU. Recommendation material change of use business use cafe and ancillary gift shop. So this is a report concerning the application seeking approval for a material change of use for a cafe and ancillary gift shop at fifty Badoons Road, Hagsley. And the application requires a determination by council in accordance with the framework for development applications and related activities policy, as more than twenty property properly made submissions objecting to the proposed development have been received. The application is not a sensitive development matter pursuant to the framework for the development applications and the related activities policy, and therefore the recommendation has not been reviewed by the independent decision review panel. The proposed development has been assessed against the applicable assessment benchmarks, and the proposed development generally complies with the assessment benchmarks or can be conditioned to comply as outlined below. May I ask for the relevant council officer to come to the lectern, please? And just to remind all councillors that we should be asking questions. It hasn't been moved in seconded. So if we could just make sure that we ask questions, not going to discussion before it's moved in seconded. Would you like to state your name and your job title, please?
Greg Potter, manager of development planning.
Thank you, Mr Potter. Mr Potter, I can see that Coffee by Josh has been operating for several years without relevant planning and building approvals being obtained. And will this application bring the business in line with council's required regulations?
Yeah, look, it's a good question, and the team have been discussing this. So there has been some history of compliance issues. If this were to be approved today, then effectively the development wouldn't be in compliance with those conditions. So our approach, the development compliance team, will be meeting with the landowners next week to work on a compliance management plan in terms of each of those conditions. Notably, one of those conditions requires, for example, the removal of the shipping containers on the site, which will facilitate then the construction of the shed, which will accommodate the ancillary gift shop, as well as the relocation of the coffee van and the car parking area, which is planned to be sealed and the site access point. So development compliance officers will speak with the landowner next week just to reiterate the obligations under this approval and to work with the landowner in terms of those reasonable timeframes to achieve compliance.
Thank you, Mr Potter. Could this business currently operate within the bounds of an exempt home-based business?
No. And look, the history of the application, it's clear that earlier on, an enforcement notice was issued. I believe the the landowner had sought to do that, to operate as an exempt home-based business. But further inspections revealed that quite clearly this use is a business use for a cafe and ancillary gift shop, hence why the the landowner then proceeded with an application, which has been assessed by council officers and which we have in front of us today. So it's clear that it is a business use for a cafe and ancillary gift shop.
Okay. My next one's a bit of a longer question. So I did, I read every single properly made submission. There were twenty nine of people being raised in the community concerning the application. Some of the biggest concerns were, there were views that the development will have a negative impact on the rural amenity of the residents nearby, that this development will have the potential to changing the zoning of the property, that Klaus Road will become congested, and there'll be more dust, and that people will park on the road shoulder. There were concerns about litter, odour and noise. Would you mind detailing how each of these concerns have been conditioned to ensure that the business is not impacting on the area in a negative way?
Sure, Mayor. I'll start with the amenity issue. So effectively, the proposal is a very small scale. It's of a minor scale, acknowledging one of the submissions, it's not for a rural living use or a residential use. It's a small-scale business use. If you look at the plans, it's identified that the area accompanying both of those uses, the cafe and ancillary gift shop, is small. There's a shed of about 144 square metres, and then an awning covering where the coffee van will be and an outdoor seating area of approximately 72 square metres. So in total size, you're looking at about 200 square metres. I would say that the applicant has considered surrounding rural residential properties and the distance from the facility. So the structures are significantly set back from those adjoining properties and in particular residential dwellings. In addition to that, one of the conditions that has been imposed is to restrict the hours of operation. So effectively, it would operate from Wednesday to Friday, from seven AM to eleven AM, so four hours each for each day, and then on a Saturday from eight AM to twelve PM. There is no operation of the business from Sunday to Tuesday, and there will be no operation outside of those hours. In terms of, and I'll try and cover all of these, Mayor, in terms of Klaus Road and the traffic. So another condition imposed is to construct a sealed car parking area, which will accommodate fourteen car parking spaces and at a minimum, one person with disability space, and the site access is to be upgraded as well. So if you if you think about at capacity, and that that meets the demands of that car park will accommodate the demands of both the cafe in terms of customers and the gift shop and in terms of staff that will be be working there. In terms of Klaus Road, so if you think about that number of at capacity, that number of vehicles, it's only a slight increase in traffic. And admittedly, Klaus Road is a sealed road with gravel shoulders, correct. But by sealing the car parking area and having the proper sealed site access, that will certainly limit any need for vehicles being on the road, parked on the street. In addition to that, it's a fairly flat area. So sightlines to and from the site, so viewing north and south from a safety perspective, when vehicles are turning into the site or exiting the site, there's certainly good visibility to ensure that there's a safe environment for vehicles. In terms of, I'm just trying to cover those off, in terms of, there were some comments, yes?
I think that litter or odor or noise?
Litter or odor, correct. So conditions have been imposed, obviously, to deal with litter, waste storage. So on the premises during those hours of operation, you know, bins around the service area, and then then that'll be disposed of at the end of the day. And of course, there'll be waste transported off the site. In terms of odor, I know there was a specific comment, for example, in relation to toilets. That is an extra permit that will be required by the applicant. And of course, that'll have to meet legislative standards. So in that case, I know a resident or submitter was concerned about odor. That will certainly address that particular issue. Was there another one, Mayor? Sorry. Okay, thank you.
Does anyone have any other questions? I think, yes, councillor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr Potter. That was really helpful. I just have a query around your comment about reasonable timeframes to meet conditions imposed as part of the approval. As we see on occasion across the city with some of the DA's, conditions aren't met, extensions are sought, there's delays for, you know, a lot of reasons. It might be weather or... How do we know or get comfort that?
I understand. It's a good question, and certainly that is a natural concern. The development compliance team, as I said, will be out there next week, meeting with the landowner. And it'll be, given the compliance history and the enforcement history, I think it'll be made fairly clear what those requirements are. So for example, if one of those conditions is to remove the shipping containers, so effectively, in doing that and being able to construct, you know, the shed and the car park, in essence, the the operation would have to cease until such time as those conditions realise.
Thank you.
That's okay.
Thank you. I think councillor Allen had a question.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just looking at the toilet situation.
Sure.
Can you have coffee shops without facilities for patrons?
Can you have coffee shops without toilets?
Well, mostly there's a toilet somewhere for people that go.
Yes.
Is there nothing there at the moment? And we're not saying there's no timeline on when he would have to put one?
I haven't been out on the site, so I'm assuming that may well be the case. But that is certainly, and I can understand why that submission was raised, you know, a cafe type use, and the number of customers that would be there at any one time, there needs to be toilet facilities available. So.
But no timeline?
That's part of the condition. So that will be, so a toilet, all of the conditions that have been imposed are prior to commencement of use. So that would have to be established, effectively, prior to the use. I know the use exists at the moment, but everything would have to cease, and that would need to be the relevant licensing would need to be completed for that.
I think the deputy mayor was, sorry, the deputy mayor was.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Morning. The conditioning, as you've described, to make the the operation under the planning approval, if it's approved, compliant, what can you explain if if those conditions, conditioning is not complied with, the process that would be undertaken in this specific case?
Well, if the conditions aren't complied with, as I said, the the development compliance team are willing to work with the landowner to come up with a compliance management plan. But if they're not complied with, then obviously, there'd have to be compliance action taken. There'd be enforcement action against the landowner.
And I did note during the process, so when the application was first uploaded to Development I, with regards to the addressing, there was a bit of mismatch with property details with regards to Badoons Road. Can you confirm that all landholders where that was affected, that were affected, have been appropriately notified, and it's been confirmed that there is no development application across their land?
Yeah, that's fine. It's a good question. Look, I'm aware of the problem. I note that there were four historical parcels showing, and they have a link to applications, historical applications in council's pathway system. That issue, that system, which has now been fixed, in terms of notification to those affected landowners, submitters, that's something I'd have to speak to council officers about. But it has been resolved. Perhaps I would say, though, that the important point in addition to that is that, in terms of the application itself, the DA forms, the planning report, the public notification forms, all of that has the correct address on it, and has been undertaken in accordance with the relevant legislation, in this case, the Planning Act. But I can confirm that.
Sure, Mr Potter. But can you just confirm again as to whether the other landholders that were affected by the mismatch of addressing?
I'm not aware that those landowners have been contacted.
Yes. And so an officer of council has spoken with them directly?
I'd have to take, no, my understanding is not, no.
Will that be undertaken?
That can be undertaken. We can address that.
Yeah, that's, I believe that's very important, because there are some people that are concerned.
Would that be up to the applicant to do the public notification or?
Yeah, we can do that. Yeah, that's something we can, we can address.
Thanks, Mr Potter.
Councillor Quinnsman, I think you're next.
Actually, my question's just been asked, but could I clarify when the operation will need to cease, following that meeting next week?
Well, the the operation, I think that's, that's the message that will be delivered from the developments compliance, the development compliance team, as that there are conditions imposed, and they need to be addressed immediately before we can commence. It could cease immediately.
Yeah, thank you.
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay. Mr Potter, I noticed that, if I look at page twenty five, that the agritourism policy that council adopted back in March 2022 was relevant here. I can see that the rural tourism development fee relief policy was applied. Can you explain how that was applied? That was something that was brought in by this council, I think, two years ago to assist businesses like this?
Absolutely. Look, it's outside of the typical assessment benchmarks and the planning scheme. It's a policy that was adopted, and it's very clear in that policy that it supports small-scale rural tourism uses, such as a business, such as a cafe and gift shop, a shop. So that particular document in the assessment of this application is given the appropriate way, as it should do. And it is very, it is very clear for this type of use. So that has been a relevant consideration in the assessment of this application.
Was there any fee relief?
Fee relief in terms of for parks and community services, but there's still a transport charge, yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Mr Potter. Thank you. First time to the lectern, so thank you. The recommendation from the council officers is that council approved development application four, six, five, zero slash twenty twenty three slash MCU, being the material change of use for business cafe and ancillary gift shop, subject to conditions as contained in attachment one of this report. There are many conditions there. I will move that. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Quinnsman. In moving this, I tell you, there's no doubt that the idea to provide Josh with a way to participate fully in his local community is very admirable. And council plays an important role in creating an environment which is inclusive of all people, through its planning role and through its involvement in many communities' activities and services. We want to encourage accessible and inclusive communities for all. But there can be no favouritism. Must must sit within the appropriate council guidelines of framework and adhere to our planning scheme and the state government's planning as well. I do note that twenty nine submissions were made in relation to this application, and I have read every single one of them. And I note the applicant has failed to comply with council's orders in regarding this site in the past. And I think that's borne out by some of the questions from councillors today about if this is approved, what is going to happen straight away? Because there has been non-compliance there for at least three years, I think that I know of. If this application is approved today, we would expect the applicant to comply with this approval and its conditions. I do note that council is meeting with the applicant, if it does go ahead with a compliance management plan. I do note the restriction on the hours from Wednesday to Friday, from seven AM to eleven AM, and Saturday, eight AM to twelve PM, and also a new sealed car park for fourteen cars as well. Also note that council's agritourism policy that we adopted back in March 2022 has also supported this as well, as well. I'll open it for other discussion from councillors. Thank you, deputy mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. In terms of the time span, from when this operation had first commenced through to now finally receiving the development application and it being assessed, in all fairness, right across the community, if there is a regulated use being undertaken on a parcel of land in the city of Ipswich, everybody needs to comply with the same set of rules that any other business enterprise would need to be governed by. So it's good to see this progressing this way, and that particularly the reason why I asked what would be the course of action if the conditioning wasn't complied to, just to know what, to give peace of mind to those particularly surrounding landholders in that area, so that they know what the process is. I certainly personally wish Josh's coffee successful trading when the application is completed and the business is underway.
Thank you. Any other councillor Quinnsman's a second? Would you wish to speak to it?
Just briefly, Mayor, on the basis of the council officer's recommendation, I will vote for this approval. I note the stringency of the conditions being imposed, and I see this as an opportunity to regularise an irregular situation. I believe that the conditions take due note of the objections of residents, and it should be noted that this is a very small-scale operation with very limited hours, and will also be sufficiently set back from surrounding residents. We look forward to a resolution of this irregular situation.
Thank you, councillor Quinnsman. I have any other commentary? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber. Councillor Tully, how do you vote?
I agree.
Thank you very much. It's approved. Move on to item three, which is a request to extinguish local government agreement, number seven, zero, one, five, six, one, six, four, eight. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer on this matter? No? In that case, I'll move recommendation A and B, that council consent to the cancellation removal of that agreement, and that Form eighteen general consent be provided to the landowner to accompany for this with the local government agreement. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Heckner. I'll open up any comments, discussion? There being none, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber. Councillor Tully, how do you vote?
I agree.
Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. Item four is the strengthening Ipswich communities plan. The recommendation that council receive a note the final draft of the strengthening Ipswich communities plan. Ipswich Communities Plan. May I ask for the relevant council officer to come to the lectern, please?
Good morning. Brett Davy, General Manager Planning at Regulatory Services.
Thank you, Mr Davy. Council currently has no strategy that guides our investment and planning for community facilities. Can you explain what this does?
Of course. So this document is a result of a catalyst project titled the Strengthening Ipswich Communities Plan. The concept behind it is to try and understand the various needs of our communities across the city, with a focus on identifying the services and facilities that are available, either through our functions, through state government, Commonwealth Government functions, and also some private functions, and pair that data with where our communities of need are, and what types of facilities our communities and growing communities require. And so the outcome of the exercise is to identify a network of facilities that are required across the city to guide our investment and consideration of where the priorities are. It also links in with the local government infrastructure plan, and as you may recall, before Christmas, we adopted the latest draft of the local government infrastructure plan, which includes the collection of monies through development to acquire land for community assets. And this document meshes with that work, so that we identify a network of land that's either to be acquired through the LGIP that we already have, or to be acquired in the future, and then a concept of what should go on there in terms of function. The next steps, obviously, if this is adopted in the future, is to consider the level of investment required for constructing or enhancing assets to achieve the outcomes identified in the plan.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of Mr Davy? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will move that recommendation. Do I have a second? Thank you, councillor Doyle. In moving this, council, there's no strategy currently that guides our investment and planning for community facilities. We have many plans when it comes to trunk infrastructure, but this is a really important part for our community. I'm pleased that the strengthening Ipswich Communities Plan is addressing this gap, as our need for social infrastructure to expand with our population is greater than ever. The community hub model will ultimately shape better neighbourhoods, ensuring for more efficient use of land, better accessibility, and contribute to strong and connected communities. A great example of a community hub is that recently redeveloped Tumal Place in the Nicola Stret Precinct. Here is a place the community can come together, where parkland, libraries, food and entertainment options are all within metres of each other, and public transport options are nearby, and there's also plentiful parking, so this place is easily accessible for everyone. We know this method works with just over one million people visiting Tumal Place the last year. Spaces like this are safe, they're inclusive and equitable, and have a focus on art and cultural experiences that are valued by our community. The community feedback that we have received on this plan is that people want community hubs to build community connection, to be inclusive and accessible, and they want to make sure that council is making the most of existing facilities, for us to be efficient, and sharing resources across institutions and organisations, and this is what this plan will do. I thought it was quite good, especially on page, I think sixty-two of the report here, talking about the desired standards of service for these community hubs, not about citywide, but even there's an example there for the Ripley Valley PDA, what can we do as that's being developed, and how do we include those hubs? So when we are building a library in the future, how do we create that community centre office space for councillors visiting, and things like that? So it's very, I think it's a great way, it's a formal way for us to know that we've engaged with the community, but also it's a very good pathway forward as our community continues to grow. I'll hand over to other councillors, if they'd like to speak to it.
I would, please.
Yes, yes, councillor.
I think that the idea of having community hubs, I agree they have to be with transport, but we have the opportunity out at Ripley to have a community centre funded by the state government attached to a library. So, you know, I'd like to see this report activated now, so that we can actually get on with providing that service for the growing area of the PDA. And also, I think that we need to have shopping centres or something like that, or we need to build on to the areas of community hubs and libraries, because that's what attracts the foot traffic. So I'm pleased that the reports come up, and perhaps we can move forward with the Ripley Valley.
Thank you, councillor Olive. Any other discussion? Yes, councillor Johnny?
Thank you, mayor. Just a grammatical error, for one, on page eighty-two, Yamanto, missing the N. And just thanking the team for preparing the report, and just noting that we need to take these reports into consideration when we're making all decisions in council in the future as well.
Thank you. Any other commentary? No? Thank you for the team, for the consultation that you had with councillors over the eight months to you, that it was being done, and all the community consultation. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber. Councillor Tully, how do you vote?
I agree.
Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. We're now moving on to item five, which is the exercise of delegation report. Does anyone have any questions of the relevant council officers on this report? In that case, I will move that this report concerning applications that have been determined by delegation for authority for the period fourteenth of November twenty twenty-three to twenty-second of January twenty twenty-four, be adopted. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Doyle. Any discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour? It's unanimous in the chamber. Councillor Tully, how do you vote?
I agree.
Thank you. We're now moving on to item six, which is the Planning Environment Court Action Status Report, and I have a question about a matter. If I could ask the relevant council officer to speak about the matter on the register two oh six, which is the childcare centre in Camira. Thank you. Do you mind just saying your name again?
Greg Potter, manager of development planning.
So this is obviously a childcare centre that council refused and was taken to court. Do you mind giving us an update?
Yeah, sure. So for the Camira Childcare Centre, the reason the application was originally refused was because the applicant hadn't provided sufficient information during the application process, and that resulted in some without prejudice discussions, and of course, they amended the plans. Acoustic and landscaping experts on both sides had agreed that there are relevant conditions that could be imposed as part of that approval. Council then drafted conditions, and there were some negotiations, but the outcome is ultimately was a consent order approving the development, subject to those conditions.
Right, so it was a decision by the judge?
Yeah.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you. Any other questions from councillors? No, thank you, Mr Potter.
You're welcome.
Does anyone else have any other questions on any of the matters in item six? In that case, I move that the Planning Environment Court Action Status Report be received, and the contents noted. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Quinsman. Any discussion? No? In that case, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber. How do you vote, councillor Tully?
I agree.
Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. We have no notices of motion, no matters arising, no procedural motions, so it's now nine thirty-seven, and I'm just looking at the chair of the Governor's Transparency Committee. Do you wish to start in ten minutes, or ten thirty, or?
Oh, completely whatever the committee members would like, I'm flexible.
Noting it's twenty minutes to, so start at, we'll come, we'll... You're right. So I propose that we come back at quarter past ten.
Yes.
I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour? That's unanimous in the chamber. Councillor Tully?
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you.